They called me in order for September 28, 2020 for Sacramento County Planning Commission. We can start with our opening comments.
Okay, in compliance with directives of the county, state and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is live streamed and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. When the chair opens, public comment for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Send your email comments to boardclerk@zachcounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
All right, can we start with taking attendance? Local?
Yes. Commissioner Polly? Commissioner Shelby?
Here.
Make sure that the mics are unmuted. Commissioner Hahn?
Here.
And Commissioner Tati Chi?
Here.
And Commissioner Martenson?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
All right. Can we call up the, we'll start with the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America. The Republic stands unafraid, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can we call up the first item on the agenda?
Yes, item number one is a zoning ordinance. Amendment is related to industrial hemp. And the environmental document is that it is exempt.
Okay, good evening, I'm Mark McLean with Planning and Environmental Review. And this may seem familiar to you, this, this project was brought to you on May 11th and you did vote to approve. Since that time, we went back to a, specifically the Delta CPAC. We made three changes to the ordinance that I'd like to go over with you. If that's okay, instead of going through the entire PowerPoint, we maybe start on page eight if that's acceptable?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, yeah. Okay, so, like I said, this was, the industrial hemp ordinance was heard on May 11th at your hearing body. And since that time, the, some of the, the three changes are, we've increased the size of the AG zone property to 40 acres. So, bullet point number two, the outdoor cultivation is permitted on AG zone properties with the minimum size to 40 acres. Originally, when we first brought it to you, we had 20 acres, so we basically doubled the size. This was in hopes to help with bigger lots, would help with some of the nuisance and odor problems that may come out of this. And indoor cultivation in M1, two, in M1 and M2 industrial zones is allowed with outdoor, with the outdoor odor shall not be detectable. Now, what we did with the, the, some of these CPACs were having issues with the processing of industrial hemp and the possible odors. So, we also modified the processing of industrial hemp, that it too would be inside an enclosed structure where the odable, where the odor is not detectable from the outside. And the third thing was, is the setbacks. We specified the measurements and we specified to say from the property line of the adjacent property to the closest portion of the industrial hemp crop. And then we also added a setback for non-genalag zone property to 1,320 feet. So, those are the, the three basic changes to the industrial hemp ordinance. And I'll be happy to field any of your questions.
Anyone, commissioners have questions? Staff?
This is Commissioner Hahn, I have one question for Mark. Yes. There was a note on there that the, for the permit, the ag commissioner basically approves annual permitting for the applicant, right?
Correct.
And I was just wondering, during the annual reapplication or approval, is the public noticed or is it just, just administrative? You, the applicant applies and, and goes to the process? And basically, is there any public noticing of that?
That's a good question, I don't know for sure, I, I think.
Wendy, I can answer that.
Okay, thanks Wendy.
Um, so this is really the public's opportunity to comment on both the zoning code and the county code amendments. The registration process based on responses to the same question at the CPAC meetings. Chris Flores has indicated that there would not be public noticing in the same manner that there is for entitlement projects. So, there's, there's, there's no hearing or public notification. We would be able to make lists of approved sites made available. Those sites will be provided to code enforcement and the sheriff's department automatically. But we also would be able to make the list of approved sites available to the public if requested.
Okay, but the, the public, let's say the public, a next door neighbor says, hey, what's going on? They can call the ag commissioner and find out if there's a legal grow next door or not, right?
Correct, so.
Okay.
She plans on handling it similar to when people apply for their pesticide permits and other similar permits and clearances that they need from the ag commissioner's office.
Thank you.
This is Cara, I have a question about the state standard. I feel like it, it might have changed what the minimum parcel size is in the law. I think it used to be five acres, but I'm not sure now. Is there, is there an update there? And if you don't know right now, it's fine, I'm just curious.
Yeah, are you talking about like in the, the state or the federal? If they have a, a size limit or anything? Is, was that the question?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought in the implementing legislation, there was a minimum parcel size, but I don't remember, I'm just curious where it would be in relation to the 40 acres.
Yeah, you know, I, I am doing all this, so we've never had a minimum size, we've always had max or, or never had a question that way. I, I don't know, I suspect we could get back to you with the information. I think Chris would probably readily have some of that, I could app check with her, I'll write that down.
Okay, just, yeah, be interested.
Yeah. This is Wendy again.
Go ahead.
Um, there was some early legislation that restricted the size limitations for universities and research facilities to a maximum acreage size. I don't recall if there was any such provisions for just commercial cultivation, but we will definitely follow up with, with Chris on that.
Okay, yeah, I saw in the, the law that sort of implemented the, the farm bill and the, and the state plan, that there was a minimum acreage size for kind of some of these same reasons. I just don't remember what it is, so, but I, I'm positive it's, if it, if there is one, it's not, it's, it's way below 40 acres. So, I'm just curious, if you, if you find out, just let me know.
Will do, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, I don't hear any. Are there any public comments we have for this item?
This is Lydia from the board's office, and there are no public comments at this time.
Okay, well, if that's the case, we can close public comment and entertain additional comments or our motion?
This is Alan, I'll make the motion to approve staff recommendations.
This is Commissioner Tati Chi, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we can, we can vote on it?
Okay. Commissioner Polly? Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hahn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tati Chi?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yeah.
And the motion passes.
Can we call up the second item on the agenda?
Yes, item number two is a zoning ordinance amendment for the Aerojet Special Planning Area located at the northwest corner of White Rock Road and Grantline Road in the Cordova community. And the environmental doc is a mitigated negative declaration.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Kimber Gutierrez, and I will be presenting the Aerojet Special Planning Area Amendment Project. Before I begin, I just want to reiterate that the project materials are available online for anyone who would like to access them. The website is planningdocuments.zachcounty.net, and the control number is PLNP 2019-00367. Next slide, please. So, the site is located at the northwest corner of White Rock Road and Grantline Road, and is approximately 250 acres in size, and contains an existing 100-acre inactive landfill on the eastern portion of the site. That landfill is known as the White Rock North Dump. Next slide, please. The site is zoned light industrial and is surrounded by interim agricultural reserve zone to the south and the Aerojet Special Planning Area to the east, west and north. So, the proposed project is a zoning ordinance amendment to add the light industrial M1-zoned property to the Aerojet Special Planning Area. The intent of adding this property is to reestablish or establish a landfill use for the subject site. Next slide. The applicant's proposal includes two phases. So, phase one involves the construction of a 50-acre Class II landfill on the northeastern portion of the White Rock North Dump parcel. So, the proposed landfill is referred to as the Aerojet Waste Consolidation Unit, or the ACU. And phase one would include, involve the transportation of 1 million cubic yards of transfer material from various locations within the identified service area, so the Aerojet Special Planning Area, including material from the Aerojet landfill for disposal and closure. Construction of the ACU would be completed in phases, starting with a 500,000 cubic yard cell. So, you can see phase one is the purple outline, and the first phase would be 1A, so that's the 500,000 cubic yard cell. This would be followed by construction of additional cells in 100,000 cubic yard increments as needed until transfer material has filled the entire ACU's 1 million cubic yard capacity. Phase two of the proposal follows completion of the transfer activities when the ACU would be capped and closed consistent with Title 27 requirements. Aerojet is committing to an ACU closure by December 31st, 2035. The ACU and existing White Rock North Dump is completely within the eastern portion of the site. The western portion of the subject parcel contains existing wetland and elderberry biological resources. So, at this time, there is no proposed plans or development for the western portion of the site. Next slide, please. The Aerojet landfill is located approximately two miles north of the proposed ACU location, so the subject parcel. It is north of Aerojet Road and south of Highway 50. This landfill includes a 190-acre portion of a 214-acre Aerojet-owned parcel. The transfer material would include waste that is classified as contaminated, non-hazardous, Class II waste. Waste that was disposed in the Aerojet landfill is understood to be municipal solid waste from administrative buildings and operations within the Aerojet area. However, previous site characterizations have determined that although disposable, disposal of hazardous waste was not allowed in the landfill, there is a potential to encounter soil-contaminating hazardous chemicals that require special handling and proper disposal. But just to reiterate that the transfer material coming from the Aerojet landfill to the ACU will only include material that is classified as Class II waste, which is contaminated, non-hazardous. So, anything hazardous would not be accepted at the ACU. And then on the, on the screen, you'll see the black outline in the north is the Aerojet landfill. The red dash line is the haul route, so where the haul trucks would be traveling. And then the orange at the bottom is the White Rock North Dump parcel. And then the green is the ACU. Next slide, please. The transfer material would be hauled by trucks utilizing the existing paved private roads within the access-controlled Aerojet property. This map on the screen shows the haul routes anticipated throughout the entire Aerojet service area. The Aerojet landfill really is the only main parcel that has been identified as having transfer material come from. But the applicant is anticipating other areas without the service area to contribute to the ACU capacity. So, that is why we have another map showing the potential haul routes of other parcels in the service area. And next slide. Here is a conceptual site plan of the ACU. So, this includes the placement of the proposed access roads and the landfill footprint. Next slide. Screening is proposed as part of the establishment of the landfill. So, a six-foot, it's kind of hard to see, but there is a six-foot tall chain, sorry, six-foot tall chain link fence with barbed wire across the top. That is proposed around the ACU, and landscape screen is proposed within a 10-foot wide landscape planter along White Rock Road right of way. So, if we go to the next slide, you'll see some landscape renderings of what this would look like. So, the top is existing, the bottom is proposed. Next slide. And this is looking west along White Rock Road, this is proposed. Next slide. And then this just shows a cross-section of the landscape planter as well. So, the top is aerial, and then the bottom is the cross-section. Next slide. Before I go over kind of the key points where I kind of talk about the need for the entitlement, I did kind of want to give a little bit of background about the Aerojet landfill and kind of the purpose and reasoning behind the applicant pursuing this project. The Aerojet landfill does have a clean closure plan currently in place, which specifies a haul route that follows Prairie City Road to Highway 50, and from there to a landfill appropriate for disposable, disposal of the transfer material. Due to the recent and ongoing wildfires in the state of California, existing disposal facilities in the region have received unanticipated large volumes of debris, which results in limited landfill space. And furthermore, the transport of up to 1 million cubic yards of waste over public streets and highways raised a number of concerns related to potential impact to roadways, air quality and public safety. So, through the construction of the ACU, the applicant is creating a disposable disposal location to accommodate waste from future development areas within the Aerojet service area. So, to kind of cover these key points, the, the proposal before you all today is a zoning ordinance amendment. So, that is seeking to add the M1-zone property to the industrial zone of the Aerojet Special Planning Area. This process is specifically carved out within the Aerojet Special Planning Area itself. It does say that if Aerojet owns a property, if it's under the same ownership, then they are allowed to go through a zoning ordinance amendment to add or delete property from the SPA. So, this is that process. The landfill use is an existing use within the Aerojet Special Planning Area. So, the SPA does have specific language that allows the continuation and relocation of existing uses on the site. So, under the SPA, it would be a permitted use. And the ordinance itself is attached to the report package, which amends the Aerojet Special Planning Area boundary and land use designation, as well as a description of the ACU project itself. So, the actual Waste Consolidation Unit project description is included, as well as the exhibits that you all have seen on the PowerPoint, and conditions of approval and mitigation measures. Next slide, please. Prior to the initiation of this project, the Water Board, County and CalRecycle consulted and determined an approach to handle the environmental document. A decision was made for the Water Board to be the lead agency, with the county as a responsible agency for purposes of review and comment. So, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared by E-Corp Consulting on behalf of the applicant for this project, and was released for review on June 24th of this year. The initial study and MND is scheduled to be considered and certified at the Water Board's October 15th and 16th meeting. Potentially significant impacts to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and geology and soils were identified, but all the impacts were to be reduced to a less than significant level with the implementation of the identified mitigation measures. Next slide, please. The Cordova CPAC met on July 16th of this year and recommended approval, so seven yeses and zero no's. No issues were raised, however, a number of clarifying questions were asked by the CPAC and were addressed by the applicant. And the proposed project, after review, has been found consistent with the general plan, Cordova Community Plan and Zoning Code. The initial study and mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project identified that the project would result in less than significant impact with implementation of identified mitigation measures. Additionally, the Cordova CPAC recommended approval of the project for, so for these reasons, per staff recommends approval of this request. So, recommends that the Planning Commission make the following recommendations to the board. So, determine that the mitigated negative declaration scheduled to be certified by the board is adequate and complete for the proposed action, and approve the zoning ordinance to amend the Aerojet SPA subject to the findings and conditions providing, provided in the ordinance itself. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
This is Cara, I'm just curious about the status of the other, the solid waste permit, which I assume is from CalRecycle, and, and the, the Water Board that they're hearing is coming up as well. I know these are unrelated, but I'm just curious.
The approval of the solid waste permit for the ACU?
For, yeah, for the landfill. I'm assuming that comes from the state?
Yes, it comes from the state, and the, our local enforcement agency would be our, the county's environmental management department. And I believe, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that process comes after this approval. So, they would need to, yeah, go for that if this zoning ordinance amendment is approved.
I didn't know if it was happening simultaneously or not, I'm assuming that's the same with the Water Board as well?
The, the certification of the environmental document is having, is happening simultaneously, but I don't believe the solid waste permit is happening simultaneously.
Okay.
That's correct, Kimber.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions? Anything other applicant here?
Yes.
All right, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Roy Brewer, Attorney General of Loughran, representing Aerojet and Easton Development Company. Chris Finacy, are you on the line as well?
Yes, I am, Roy.
Okay, Chris is a licensed professional engineer with Aerojet remediation, and is the point person for the landfill request. Michael Fortune is the Development Director for Easton Development Company, the real estate arm of Aerojet Rocketdyne, and may be joining us, but he was in Santa Rosa today on fire-related business, so may not be on the phone with us. I appreciate the thoroughness of Kimber's staff report and presentation. In the interest of time, I'm not going to repeat it, I'm not going to repeat anything that she said. I particularly liked the brief history of the White Rock North Dump Site, the approval of the Glenboro at Easton Land Use Master Plan, and the approval of the Clean Closure Plan for the Aerojet landfill, all three of which together give rise to our request tonight. I would like to supplement two points in Kimber's report with additional information you might find useful. First, on pages 12 and 13 of the report, there's a reference to public noticing of meetings in the two CPAC meetings held on this request. I'd like you to note that we've also briefed the city managers for both Rancho Cordova and the city of Folsom, and received no objections from them related to this project. Secondly, on page 13 of the staff report, there's a reference to the number of truck trips and the distance that would be traveled by those trucks in the event the waste material from the Aerojet landfill were to be transported to off-site landfills. Approval of this request, the request before you tonight, will benefit the environment by reducing the truck miles traveled and the CO2 emissions, and by completely eliminating the use of public roads. The, as noted in the staff report, the round trip distance to an off-site Class II landfill is about 120 miles. With the proposal in front of you, that is reduced to nine miles. Those nine miles occur solely within the Aerojet property and solely on private roads owned by and maintained by Aerojet. So, there'll be no impact to public roads whatsoever, because all the truck traffic will be on Aerojet property and on Aerojet private roadways. In addition, there's approximately an 8 million truck mile reduction. Reduction of 8 million truck miles if this application is approved, and, and a associated reduction of 19 million pounds of CO2 emissions. We think those benefits to support the project. So, with those two additional points, I request your support for our request tonight, and Chris and I are happy to answer any questions you might have related to the project.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I don't hear any, so we'll move on. Do we have any public comment?
There are no public comments at this time.
All right, no public comment, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain any additional comments or, or motion this, this time?
This is Commissioner Tati Chi, I just want to disclose that I did take a meeting with the applicant. And I, at this point, I have no additional questions for, for the project.
This is Cara. Sure, I'll, I'll make, happy to move staff recommendation and approve the zoning ordinance to amend the SPA.
I'll second that. We didn't properly move the seconded, can we take a vote?
Yes. Commissioner Polly? Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hahn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tati Chi?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Can we call up item three on the agenda?
Yes, item number three is a rezone immunity and comprehensive plan amendment, tentative subdivision map, design review and affordable housing strategy, located approximately 750 feet south of Gerber Road and 1,300 feet east of Bratchell Road in the Vineyard Community, and the environmental doc is addendum to prior environmental impact report.
All right, good evening, commissioners. My name is Emma Patton, and
and I do have a presentation for, for this project. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this project is located south of Gerber Road and east of Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community. And actually, the, the next slide gives a better sense of the project location, um, as it relates to the surrounding projects. Perfect, thank you. So, the Wildhawk Unit 10 project is a part of a larger community of proposed maps known as Wildhawk North. Um, the Wildhawk Unit 10 project was previously included within the boundary of the Wildhawk Northwest Project, um, where it was, at that time, identified to be used as a basin and a park site. However, since then, drainage studies have confirmed that the basin in this particular location was not necessary. And so now the applicant proposes residential lots in its place. Next slide, please. The project request, um, includes a rezone, a community plan amendment, and a comprehen- comprehensive plan amendment to establish residential land use and zoning consistent with the proposed tentative map. The map proposes five RD7 single-family lots, 29 RD5 lots, and a 6.6 acre park site with two open space lots. And I will also note that the tentative subdivision map includes an exception to Title 22 to allow a decreased intersection offset and the abandonment of easements. Lastly, there is a design review with this project as well. Next slide, please. The proposed map will connect to the adjacent approved tentative subdivision maps. So, as, uh, you may have noted in that, um, or that composite map, there, this particular project site is surrounded by other approved tentative subdivision maps. The map features 34 residential lots with a lot orientation allowing for homes to front the Gerber Creek Corridor, which will act as a future amenity for residents with a trail proposed along the south side of the corridor. In addition, the project proposes a 6.6 acre park site. Next slide, please. In order to obtain the necessary right-of-way for the circle, as shown on the map, and in order to maintain setback requirements for the Gerber Creek Corridor, as determined by the Army Corps of Engineers, there are a number of boundary line adjustments which are required. They're labeled here on this exhibit as A, B, C. The project is conditioned to complete these boundary line adjustments in the future after additional detailed engineering is complete and prior to, uh, final map recordation. I will note that Area A, uh, will result in a temporary split zone condition if the rezone associated with this project is approved. That split zone condition will be eliminated once the boundary line adjustment is completed. Next slide, please. The Vineyard CPAC reviewed this project and unanimously recommended its approval. The JAC recommended that the project be founded substantial compliance with the design guidelines. And based on those recommendations, um, and the project's consistency with the general plan, consistency with the community plan and comprehensive plans, and proposed amendment, uh, with the proposed amendments uh, to those community plans and comprehensive plans, as well as, as well as the project's consistency with the zoning code, uh, the staff is recommending approval of the request with one modification to Condition 65 of Attachment 2. Uh, the Southgate Recreation and Park District requested that this condition be changed to clarify what improvements were required for the park site dedication. Um, and so that condition, uh, has been, has been modified to, to reflect their request. Next slide, please. So I'll end here with a visual of the, the tentative subdivision map as proposed. That concludes my presentation. Uh, we do have representatives in attendance, uh, from the applicant team, as well as the Department of Water Resources and Southgate Rec and Park District, who are available for questions, and I'm also happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, do you have any questions for staff this time? If not, then, uh, can be the applicant board?
Hello, Bruce Walters checking in. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. Bruce Walters, Walters Land Planning, representing B and Z Development, uh, the applicant and property owner. Um, I think Emma, uh, has described the project well. Few things I'd like to point out. Uh, this has been a fairly long process for a relatively small project. Lot of technical items, uh, have been worked through, uh, most notably, the drainage analysis, uh, needed to justify the fact that, uh, the basin is no longer needed. Uh, reconfiguration of the internal streets. We had three cul-de-sacs originally. We revised that at the Planning Department's request to include the loop street pattern. Uh, and then the boundary line adjustment and other technical issues, uh, we've worked through. So I'm happy to say that, uh, we are, uh, moving forward with the project and, uh, happy to be here tonight. Uh, we are in agreement with all of the conditions proposed, with the exception of one, and that's Condition Number 70. Um, I, uh, had sent some emails out to the commissioners. Hopefully you had a chance to look at that, but it basically describes the reasons, uh, why we believe that the requirement for paying a fair share cost on this project, uh, for a ped bridge crossing of the open space drainage channel, uh, is not, not appropriate. And we're asking that the commission, uh, delete Condition 70 uh, from the, the conditions of approval. Just in summary, I won't get into too much detail, but just in summary, um, uh, I don't dispute the fact that a bridge at that location would be a good idea. Unfortunately, it's, uh, it's too late at this point. Um, w- we have approval of all the projects around and, and, uh, this project and, and another project to the north are really the last two projects, and they're getting, uh, burdened with the, the cost of, of constructing this bridge. So, it really, in this case, unfortunately, is, is an unfair burden on this project that, that we think is justified, uh, in removing. Uh, we think there are sufficient facilities, uh, on the south side of the channel to provide, uh, ped and bike recreational facilities. So, or, from, from a design standpoint, we, we think things are well-covered. Um, and there are existing or proposed condition, uh, connections across the creek that would, would suffice. But I apologize, I said I wouldn't get into, into the details, but I guess I, I did a little bit. Um, but those are my only, uh, comments. Uh, again, uh, we appreciate staff's, uh, work through the technical issues. Um, uh, request that the planning commissioners, uh, make a recommendation of approval to the board, and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Okay.
I just have one for staff. So what, 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 what's this, what's staff view of the, of the impact of, uh, striking, uh, Condition Number 70?
So Commissioner Shelby, this is, uh, Chris Boholi, Principal Planner. Uh, we do have, um, a representative from Southgate Recreation and Park District, Juanita Kano, um, who can speak to the condition. It is a Southgate, uh, condition that has been added, uh, to the project, and so perhaps she can speak to, uh, Condition 70.
Yeah.
Good evening, uh, this is Juanita with Southgate Rec and Park District. Um, I've come into this project pretty late on, um, but from what I've gathered, uh, most of these subdivisions have come in, um, has, if this project's basically been piecemealed. So, it seems like there wasn't a huge opportunity to look closely at how, um, everything would come together. Um, as far as I've seen, there is no specific plan for this whole area. Um, currently, just in the north portion, um, I've counted about 524 lots. That's not including the, um, the parcel that's still left, um, with no map, which is about 18 acres. Um, if you look at the whole area, there is no, um, trail on the north side, and the only access would be, um, on what I believe they call D-way, which is, um, about 40 feet in width, which doesn't lend itself to adding, um, a Class 1 or Class 2, um, bike lane. Um, so right now, our only opportunity would be to add a bridge somewhere, and I know that this condition has been around for a while, um, with the different reiterations of all the maps. Um, you know, we don't have a specific clear avenue as to how, um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do this other than a possible, uh, developer's requirement agreement, um, once these subdivisions, um, come through. But, um, I feel that it's, it's fair to say that, you know, like you said, there does need, I mean, a, a bridge would be optimal in this location. Obviously, you can see that there, both of the larger parts are also on the south. So, me as, as a parent trying to let my child ride to the park, I, I would be pretty leery of trying to get them to go around Gerber, Vineyard, or even that very narrow street on a sidewalk. So, I mean, you know, as a park district, we kind of try to develop things for our future residents and what, where we would want to see, you know, something work for that area.
So this is Chris Boholi, just, uh, once again, just to kind of reiterate what was just said and maybe add to it, um, a, a bit. Um, you know, as far as the county's review of, of the condition, um, you know, the project to the north, um, also has a similar type connection. I think we agree with, um, with the, uh, Southgate's, um, uh, perspective and agree that a, that a connection should be made. And so we think it prudent to, um, also condition the, this subdivision, just like the one is to the north, um, to share in the cost of the, uh, of the, um, uh, bridge project. And so, you know, in addition to the, to the comments that were just made, I think, you know, county staff have reviewed the condition and also agree with that, uh, condition as well to make it consistent with that northern project, uh, northern project's conditions.
All right, thank you. Um, any public comment?
There are no public comments at this time.
Here Shelby, I had a question for staff, if you don't mind. This is, uh, okay. Uh, good, uh, good evening, Chris. A quick question for you. Um, you know, the applicant was saying that, uh, is, it sounds like it's not so much the, the need or the design of the bridge, it's really the cost of the bridge. But it's, uh, all this condition is asking for pro rata share, right? So, we're not asking this applicant to pay the cost of the entire bridge, are we? Or?
No, that's correct. You're correct.
Who's sharing in the cost of this bridge? And it, and if the bridge isn't put in right now with this development, then I assume the applicant pays into the fund and then their obligation is met, and then as the other people put into the fund, soon as we have enough money, we build the bridge. It's, uh, that's over simplification.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Let me, uh, hand this over to, uh, Joel Inman, Senior Planner, who's, who's a, a little bit more intimately familiar with the, the, um, the funding of that proposed bridge.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. This is Joel Inman, Senior Planner. Um, I just wanted to indicate that's the, that is a very good segue, Commissioner Hahn. Um, there is money that, as I understand it, that is earmarked, um, uh, county money that's earmarked, um, when the county, uh, did the 404 permit for Gerber Creek realignment to have this bridge. So it is planned as a part of a, a larger plan to, to have this bridge. Um, I don't know the exact number of what the fair, of what the fair share amount would be. Um, or, and I, I actually don't know the exact number of what the county's, uh, uh, gonna be putting into that as well. So, um, I, I do know that Water Resources is on, on the call tonight. I don't know if they have that information readily available, uh, for you guys, but, uh, I do know that, that there was, uh, a fair amount of discussion about the fair share, uh, nature of this in, in the prior approval to the north.
Right. Uh, my biggest thing is that we're not asking this applicant to pay the, uh, you know, their non, non-proportionate, uh, uh, portion of the cost of the bridge. Because, uh, you know, with the bridge there, it's, it's, it's right there. So it, it seems like it has benefit to, you know, uh, for the, the potential new residents. Um, and, and I don't think anybody's disputing it's not a good idea. I'm hoping no one's disputing that. But it's really the cost mechanism and, uh, but if, if it's fairly shared by all the people there could be using it in the, in the, the development, then, uh, uh, how should I put this? Uh, I, I think that would be fair, so.
And that, and that's our intent. That is the exact intent of this. It would not be, you know, overly burdensome for, for this project.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. If not, we can entertain a motion.
Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I did have, uh, one response, if, if you may, just to the last few minutes of discussion.
Sure.
Uh, we, we understand that it's a fair share cost. Um, one is the fact that it is, it's a very large unknown at this point as to what that amount is going to be. But what we do know is that, uh, the cost so far is going to be borne on, uh, this project and the project to the north, um, that, um, based upon some ballpark numbers, uh, the cost of construction, approximately 700,000. These two projects total 110 lots. That results in about $6,400 per lot cost on these two, uh, particular projects. Um, these costs can't be shared on the adjacent, uh, approved projects because they are vesting tentative maps. Um, and state law says that no additional fees can be placed on those projects. So, again, there is a concern, uh, about cost, uh, with regard to, uh, a fairly large amount shared on a very small number of lots, and that much we do know. And that's the, uh, the main basis of our concern. Uh, we appreciate the commissioner's time. Uh, we would ask that they, uh, that you, uh, move forward, uh, in one form or another, so that we can continue this discussion, uh, with the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, that'd be my recommendation, that, um, uh, only option for us would, would be to, to delay it, right? And continue to, to look at other options. So I think we can, yeah, I would, I would push for a recommendation and then continue the conversation. You continue that conversation as you get to the board. That'd be my, that'd be my, uh, what I think we should do. With that, we'll, we'll close the public hearing, um, and we can entertain a motion.
Sounds like you just made one, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, all right, so I'll move, I'll move to approve with the, with the amended, um, uh, uh, Condition Number 65.
One second, just Kara.
All right. We have a, and a, a motion in a second. Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Polly? Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hahn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tatiishi?
Yes.
And the motion passes as amended.
Thank you all.
Can we call up the, uh, the fourth item on the agenda?
Item number four is a use permit, special development permit and designer view, uh, located at 7,3731 Fair Oaks Boulevard, at the northeast corner of the Fair Oaks Boulevard and Sutter Avenue intersection in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community. And the environmental doc is a negative declaration.
Thank you, Lydia, and good evening, Commissioners. This is Meredith Holesworth, and I am the project manager for the Fair Oaks 711 project. Um, next slide, thank you very much. The project is located at 7,300 Fair Oaks Boulevard. It's the northeast corner of the Sutter Avenue and Fair Oaks Boulevard intersection in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community. The subject parcels are located within the Fair Oaks Boulevard commercial corridor and are currently developed with two structures that would be demolished with the proposed development. Next slide, please. The request is for a use permit to allow the use of a 24-hour automobile service station and convenience store, a special development permit- a special development permit to allow onsite signage to exceed 125 square feet for a total of 186 square feet, as well as a design review to comply with countywide design guidelines. Next slide. This is the site plan. It's showing the convenience store on the southern portion of the property and the canopy for the fueling station on the north portion. The site would be accessed by two driveways, one from Fair Oaks Boulevard and one from Sutter Avenue. The proposed trash enclosure would be placed on the northeastern corner of the site. Next slide, please. This is the landscaping plan. This is depicting new planting that would be proposed and landscaping that would be included in the development. The two proposed monument signs would be located at the driveway access points. Next slide. These are the proposed convenience store elevations depicting some of the onsite building signage. The elevation on the bottom left would be the elevation that would be facing towards Sutter Avenue. And then, the elevation on the top left would be the one facing towards Fair Oaks Boulevard. Next slide. These are the proposed fuel canopy elevations. So, they are using the 7-Eleven franchise logo and the color palette on a white canopy. Next slide. The final hearing body for this project will be the Board of Supervisors. As I mentioned, this project site is located within the Fair Oaks Boulevard corridor plan within the East Fair Oaks Boulevard District. And that district, according to the plan, is to be a distinctive pedestrian-scale mixed-use district that primarily serves neighborhoods within Carmichael. The district is, as set in the plan, to evolve into a pedestrian-oriented storefront area with a mix of residential uses and smaller-scale commercial uses such as ethnic markets, coffee, food, and neighborhood commercial services, as well as some commercial service uses along Wayside Lane. Within the East District, this project is located more specifically within Area E, which, according to the plan, provides opportunities for horizontal mixed-use, specifically redevelopment of mixed-use shopping centers and small infill, street-oriented commercial. The project site is developed with two existing structures and is surrounded by paved areas. There are two trees located along the project site's northeast boundary that would be removed with the project. One of them is a native tree, but it's with, it's in poor health. So, the Arborist report has recommended that it be removed. The northern portion of the project site abuts multifamily residential 40. We're already 40 zoning to the east. And the project site would be accessed via two driveways, as I mentioned. The one from Sutter Avenue would be a 35-foot driveway and from Fair Oaks would be a 45-foot driveway. The applicant is not requesting alcohol sales at the convenience store. The application that was originally submitted did include a request for a finding of public convenience and necessity, or PCN, but that request has been withdrawn. Next slide, please. The project has received significant opposition from the community. To date, even since this PowerPoint was put together, staff has received a total of 232 unique letters of opposition. This includes letters received in response to both the CPAC and the Planning Commission mailed notices, but that has duplicate names removed. There were many community members who sent in multiple letters, but this is an up-to-date, accurate count of the total number of neighbors that we've received opposition letters from. The letters cite the following concerns: increases in crime, homelessness, and traffic, proximity to the elementary school, that there are other similar uses nearby, that the use is not compatible with the Fair Oaks corridor plan, and that the community desires different types of uses in this area. Next slide. The Design Review Advisory Committee reviewed the project on May 14th, 2020, and found the project to be in compliance with the design guidelines. The Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC voted to recommend denial by a 4-0 vote with two members absent after discussion and considering both the applicant's statement and the opposition letters. Based on staff's analysis, the project is inconsistent with applicable county plans including policies LU 32 and 34 of the general plan, Carmichael Community Action Plan, and Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan. Although the use is compatible with surrounding existing land uses as the subject parcel is located in a predominantly commercial area, the purpose does not fulfill the vision, intent, or principles of the corridor plan. The applicant requests deviations from the zoning code primary service station use and development standards through the use permit and the special development permit requests. Based on staff's analysis, staff recommends denial of the use permit request. And though staff recommends that the general findings can be made to support the deviation from the zoning code signage development standards, the special development permit is dependent on approval of the use permit. So, therefore, staff is also recommending denial of the special development permit as well. Next slide, please. So, the the following I'm having trouble hearing. Is anybody else?
Yeah, I am too.
Supervisor.
Yes, she's cutting out.
As the final hearing body to determine that the environmental requirement to seek was allowed for a while? Or should I just repeat this slide?
No, I, I think, I think we all got in the packet. I, I think, unless anyone else needs this last slide, I think we all got the, what the, what the, what staff is recommending. I got yours.
Okay. I couldn't take any questions, though.
Yeah, I, I, I see. I'll start off, I have a few questions. So, for the, for the Fair Oaks, the, the corridor plan, does it require that the mixed use be residential and commercial?
It doesn't specifically require that, but it just does request for mixed use and pedestrian-oriented uses.
Okay. And then, how do we, how do we make the determination if it uses pedestrian or auto? Is there? Because this one, I look at it and it has both. Is it based upon what the predominant usage is? Or, so, just curious of, of how, how do we go and decide when something's pedestrian-based versus auto-based?
Right. So, in this instance, just from a staff analysis perspective, we, we figure that if the, the primary use or even a significant portion of use is oriented toward automobiles, such as a gas station, that we wouldn't consider the use generally to be pedestrian-oriented.
Yeah. Okay. So, you, so, I'm, I'm gonna, we, we base it based on the predominant usage for the, for the project? Is that how, is that, is that accurate in stating that?
I think that it, it would be up to interpretation, and that's, you know, where, where your decision-making this evening comes into play. But just from a staff perspective, we don't feel that a, a use that includes a gas station or an auto service station would generally be considered as a pedestrian-oriented use. We were, we, we were happy to support the use as a convenience store without the gas station as being considered to be a pedestrian-oriented use. But when you introduce a, such a vehicle-oriented portion to the project, that's where we, we determined that we didn't think it was consistent.
Yeah. And then, the third question I had is, I think you mentioned, there's 211 notices or, or, or from the community. How many of those are alcohol-related? Because I think even in your description, a lot of them are alcohol-related. I was just curious on, is that the majority of the concern from the community?
I would say that a lot of letters did, did mention a concern with alcohol, but they do generally just oppose the use of not wanting convenience store or gas station. Just, there was an overwhelming response of that there are, that the area is over-concentrated with this type of use. And then, so, when the mailing went out for the, the Planning Commission hearing, at that time, the alcohol request had been dropped. So, I think more of the letters at that point were not referring to the alcohol portion. But that certainly was a, a very big concern upfront. So, the applicant did revise their project description in order to try to address that. But I would say, though many of the letters did mention alcohol as a concern, they listed several other concerns that were not alcohol-related as well.
Any other Commissioners have any questions for staff?
This is Peter. I have a question. In regards to the, the dropping for the selling of alcohol, if that were to be something that they wanted to do in the future, would they have to come back through the planning process? Or would that be a, a different process altogether?
They would still be required to obtain a, a finding of public convenience and necessity. So, that was the separate entitlement that they dropped from this application, but they would still be required to get that if they decided to add alcohol sales down the, down the road.
So, that would come back before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors? Or would that just be a staff endeavor?
So, a, a PCN actually goes directly to the Board of Supervisors for, for an approval or denial. It doesn't go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, but it would be heard by the Board.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Shelby.
Oh, go ahead on.
Go ahead, Kara.
Okay. I, I have more of a process question. I mean, I think we're all kind of grappling with the idea that there are a number of similar uses. In fact, I think a lot of the comments that we receive from the public indicate an over-concentration of convenience or, and, and gas stations within sort of a relatively short distance. So, but the community also spends a lot of time and, as does the Planning Department, working on, you know, longer-term visions for certain neighborhoods and areas, which is, I, I think was really kind of in conflict here. So, once, my question is, once these plans are developed that envision kind of mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly, kind of a, a more community-oriented environment, how, how, what is the process to attract this type of development to, to the area? Is there, is there a specific process? Or is it just kind of the, the planning and zoning citing, you know, conditions are in place? And then, we line up, you know, as development comes before us, whether or not they, they comply? I guess what I'm curious about, is there a way to try and attract this type of development? When, when the community has gone and, you know, the planning has, folks have gone through such an effort to develop sort of their vision of what this area should look like? How do we, how do we, like, I, I guess, bridge that disconnect?
Commissioner Martinson.
That is a good question. I was gonna, I was gonna ask Chris if you wanted to speak to that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so maybe I'll just make a, a couple of comments about, about that. So, we definitely have documents like the, the Fair Oaks Corridor Plan and other planning documents throughout the county that seek to kind of change, change an area. And, you know, we, we do work pretty closely with our economic development department. We also, you know, spend time meeting with potential applicants through pre-application meetings. We have the design review program. And so, definitely spend time trying to encourage investment in these, in these corridors and, and looking to kind of bring the type of development that the, that the community envisions through these forward, forward-looking documents. I will say, we also, you know, in some cases, you know, we just got finished having multiple meetings with the Orangevale Chamber of Commerce. You know, we work with chambers and P-bids and other property and business-related groups in these, in these districts that are also doing their own sort of outreach and, and working with developers and, and property owners as well. So, I, I, I wouldn't say that, that we're, you know, always successful. But I think we're trying to, you know, get the word out and trying to create incentives to try to encourage the type of development that the community envisions as part of these documents.
And then, I had just one other question related to the consistency with the general plan. It's noted that the project is inconsistent with LU 32 about the required floor ratio of projects within a certain distance of a, a bus stop. I was just wondering if somebody could explain that a little bit more. I don't think I fully grasp that concept.
Sure. So, the
I thought we were breaking up a little bit.
General plan policy leads to Can you hear me?
Try again.
How does it sound now? Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, sorry about that. So, the, the LU 32 is a general plan policy, like you said, related to floor area ratio. So, basically, what it's saying is for, because this project is within a general plan designation of TOD or transit-oriented development, there is a kind of a special, I guess, requirement, you could say, or a policy that it should be following that because it's within this trans-oriented development and within one-eighth of a mile of a, a local bus stop, that there's this required floor area ratio. So, basically, we're, we're just looking to have higher density, you know, more, I guess, mixed use is part of this, part of the land use policy for this area. But we just like to see higher density closer to these transit stops, especially within commercial corridors and within land that is designated to be transit-oriented development. So, because the, the project doesn't utilize enough of the, you know, the floor area ratio, it's just considered to be inconsistent with that, you know, the policy for wanting to have that, those higher-density uses closer to where more people could be utilizing the transit stops. If that didn't answer it, let me know if I can try to.
So, just, let me, like, try and repeat a bag, just so I, I make sure I fully understand it. So, you're, we're, what we're trying to do is create a policy that incentivizes actual retail that, you know, I guess, more substantial retail within access to public transportation so that folks can access goods and services efficiently using public transportation. Is that sort of the thought behind it?
So, right. And so, you know, when you get to something more like a, a light rail And so, you know, when you get to something more like a, a light rail station, the requirements go up even more. Um, it's really just, you know, being efficient about placing a lot of people close to those transit stops. Um, so the, the floor area ratios get higher if it's a light rail stop or if it's a rapid bus stop, um, rather than like a local bus line. Um, so it's just the idea of, you know, you don't want, you don't want to put like the big box store right next to the, the light rail station or if it's not, you know, taking up a, a decent amount of it, you know, the floor area ratio per se. We'd like to see like, um, you know, multi-story residential units or, um, multifamily complexes, I mean, um, that kind of thing.
And Commissioner Martenson, this is Leon Moffitt with, with county planning. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, kind of back on the prior question that you asked about sort of incentives and what is the public sector side do to achieve the vision after a plan is adopted? Uh, the one area and we have done in this area is we have road money. And so, um, what the public sector side has done is the road improvements. Um, because that's obviously, you know, the public realm there. So a significant amount of investment has been made in that Fair Oaks Boulevard area, including sidewalk improvements uh, and other improvements for overall mobility for both cars and for non-auto modes.
Okay. And that's really to help sort of put the infrastructure in place to get the, the desired development that the plan outlines, right?
Absolutely. Yes. So once we do, uh, that sort of corridor plan, then a lot of times we can qualify for grants um, to, you know, increase not just auto mobility, but increase other kinds of modes of transportation.
Great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Commissioner, uh, sir Shelby, uh, this is Alan. Is it a good time to chime in?
Yep, go for it.
Good evening, Meredith. A couple of questions for you. From reading staff recommendations, it seems like, uh, the applicant's looking for a use permit to allow twenty-four hour, uh, what's called auto service station and a convenience stores and LC zone. So in an LC zone by right, is applicant able to have a fuel island by right?
Um, that's a good question. Good evening, Commissioner. I believe that the, sorry, who is someone chiming in?
Yeah, I mean, Meredith, this is Manuel, senior planner. Yeah, no, a gas station, uh, in all, in, in the zones that they're actually permitted to be in require a use permit.
Oh, so, so.
By right.
Okay, by else, so basically LC zone, uh, is not allowed by right?
Correct.
Okay. But the convenience store is right?
A convenience store.
Store is.
Go ahead, Meredith.
Sorry, I was just gonna say the convenience store is, but it's the extended hours that require the use permit.
Okay. So the use permit is, uh, for the twenty-four hour operations for the fuel island and the store. And the use permit is for the fuel island itself. Would that be a correct statement?
The use permit would cover both uses and allow both of them to be twenty-four hours. Um, so yes, you're, you're correct that, um, the, the use permit is triggered for two different uses, um, for different reasons, but it would just be the one use permit to allow.
Right. Yeah, I understand. It's one use permit, but, uh, okay.
Right, right.
I can make sure I understand what is allowed by right in LC zone. Well, I, I should go on the record. I did meet with the applicant via, uh, a conference call, so I, I do want to, uh, put that on the record. Okay. And then, um, you know, I understand the, uh, the land use policies thirty-two and thirty-four and the, the stress for, uh, pedestrian oriented, uh, transit oriented development. Um, and then it talks about, um, you know, mixed use and it refers heavily to residential. Uh, cause when typically when people talk mixed use, they, uh, usually think about commercial and residential. But, but does, uh, LU thirty-two or thirty-four uniquely define, and I think you may have already answered this, defined mixed use with residential as being one of the components of that mixed use as a requirement?
So LU thirty-two doesn't provide a, doesn't provide a definition for mixed use?
Or, or, or the, any of the documents like the, uh, the corridor plan or anything? I'm just wondering, is there any, any, uh, written doc, county document that stipulates the term mixed use must include residential?
It does not in the, in the documents that we are referring to for this project.
Okay.
Um, the LU thirty-two does have different standards for commercial and residential, um, for these four area ratios. So it does have, um, you know, different, or those different requirements for the different uses, but it doesn't define mixed use as having to include residential.
And then let me, let me ask staff a res, uh, hypothetical question. If this application did not have a fuel island as part of the development and it was strictly, uh, commercial, like, uh, retail commercial, would you still be recommending denial of use permit if they, if they want a twenty-four hour, uh, retail operation here, but no fuel island?
So Commissioner Han, this is Chris Boholi. Um, this, you know, I, I hate to speculate exactly what our recommendation would, would be, uh, given that that's not the project that's in, in front of us. But I certainly think that, um, and we've, uh, talked with the applicant before that, that a proposal such as the one that you just mentioned, uh, would, you know, just at, at, um, maybe face value seem to be a little bit more consistent with the intent of the plan, um, rather than the project that's in front of you this evening.
Cool. Cause what I'm trying to, uh, get, um, understand, um, you know, with all the, the, uh, how, how many did it three, two hundred and thirty or whatever that number is for letters? It, it, it sounds like many of the letters, um, you know, mentioned the alcohol sales, which the applicant understand is, uh, taking that off the table. So I'm just wondering, um, you know, is the fuel island a major concern? Cause many of the letters I've read talks about, you know, crime, loitering, crash, um, you know, alcohol sales, safety of the children walking back between across street between the two high school and elementary school and I'm like that. So, but I do really didn't see anything uniquely um, saying that, uh, we're against a fuel island or did I miss that?
Well, I, I think as, um, as Meredith pointed out, I think there were a lot of concerns about, um, just gas stations in, in general. I think some of the comments that you, um, mentioned were related to sort of both the service station and potentially alcohol sales at the, at a service station. But I think some of those concerns were related just in general to the fact that it was proposed to be, or that the proposal is a service station. Um, I know that there were certainly comments, uh, that, that we received uh, from folks that were involved with the preparation of the plan. Um, or were community members at the time, um, of, of the preparation of the plan that kind of spoke to the, um, inconsistency with the vision of, of what folks thought at the time that the plan was being drafted. So I think there were comments, as, as was mentioned earlier, that, um, uh, spoke to both the proposed alcohol sales at the time as well as, uh, just the, um, uh, uh, the nature of this project being a service station.
Okay. Um, you know, um, I guess I, I do want to make a slight distinction, uh, because a service station in my mind at least is different than, uh, incidental fuel island. Oh, if the primary use of the, the project is, let's say a retail operation and it has ancillary use of fuel, of fuel island is, is not what the, I guess, the general public may consider as a service station, which is more, uh, primary, primary use is I'm selling fuel and, and I'm selling, uh, a bag of Cheetos in, in the cashier station. Um, and so I, from what I understood from the applicant, the fuel island is, um, is ancillary to the primary use. Is that what your understanding was also, or was that what the, uh, uh, neighbors understanding or is it completely different?
Um, I, I think you're asking for us to make a distinction here. I mean, I think the, the, the request is for a use permit for a, a service station and they do have a, um, you know, roughly three thousand square foot, um, twenty-four hour convenience store. I, I think i- if my math is right, I think both the, um, uh, both of them take up generally about the same amount of, of square footage on the property. So I, I don't think we're really viewing that the fuel sales as ancillary to the, to the convenience store. I mean, it's, it's sort of packaged together as one request here.
Uh, okay. All right. Fair enough. Thank you. All right. That's it for me. Uh, thank you.
Any, any other questions for, uh, for staff? All right. Now we can bring the applicant forward.
Can you hear me all right?
Oh, there we go. Let me hear you now.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone. Uh, good evening, planning commission, staff and community at large. Uh, I'm Jesse Ken of Guggenheim Retail Real Estate Partners. Uh, we are the developer for the project being heard tonight. Um, just a little background, um, I've helped seven eleven develop properties throughout Northern California. For the last six years, uh, I, I did hear mention of one of my favorite groups, the Orangeville Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are, uh, doing a new one at Maine and, and Greenback, uh, where the old Wild Sports used to be. Uh, so, uh, very happy to find our way into these, uh, communities that make up Sacramento County. Um, my company is based in Dallas, Texas, but, uh, I live and work out of Roseville. So, uh, certainly know the communities and, and know the issues that are, uh, out there affecting, uh, these neighborhoods. Uh, I'm joined tonight with, uh, alongside me is Brian Holloway of Holloway Land Development. Uh, he does a lot of on the ground entitlement workforce and Diane Kinderman of Abbott and Kinderman, uh, Legal. Um, I, I, I've done one other planning commission on, on Blue Jeans. So again, I'm, I'm going to, uh, ask that, uh, however we end up doing the idea of, um, being able to capture any thoughts that Brian and Diane might have at the end, uh, that that would be honored. But, um, again, uh, I'll follow your lead. Uh, to begin, I'd like to thank staff, uh, in particular, uh, Meredith, Chris and Manny, uh, for their assistance and, uh, determination during these unprecedented times. Do this in a lot of different municipalities and I, I always say that Sacramento County has done a great job of keeping the balls in the air, keeping things rolling. And with COVID nineteen, um, that's been very, very difficult. So again, I thank you for doing the people's business and keeping these things on the table. Seven eleven and Guggenheim are excited, excited to present this development, uh, which does include a two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine square foot neighborhood market and four pump fueling sa- station. Uh, we believe this will be a vibrant business at a prominent corner in Carmichael for the foreseeable future. Um, I think it's worth noting based on some of the very good questions that were asked, uh, by planning commission there as far as w- what the idea of this business is for the next thirty years. And I think it's very, very safe to say that, uh, the fuel serves a supporting role here to the C store. Uh, and I think that's borne out by the very fact that we've got four NPDs. Um, I, I'm only aware of, uh, my personal involvement in the Bay area of, uh, two NPD or three NPD fueling stations. And that is due mostly just because, as we all well know, uh, you're doing infill in the Bay and very, very tight properties. So the commitment to put down a building at this location with four pumps in a world of eight pumps, ten pumps, fourteen, eighteen, go to Texas, you'll see twenty-four pumps. I, I think really just kind of hits home again on the idea that our, the, the presence of this property isn't to get someone to drive across town from Natomas to, to utilize it. It is really to capture, uh, uh, people that know the brand, uh, enjoy the band, brand and, uh, become again, wh- what we're emphasizing a neighborhood market for people to, uh, to utilize. Um, seven eleven is obviously an industry leader and creating a retail experience which is affordable, fresh and friendly. Uh, this location will provide fuel, coffee, convenience and household goods, beverages, water, fresh milk, snacks and fresh foods. Uh, and w- w- we do make point to say that the fresh foods and milk in, in most cases are fresher than what you'd find in a supermarket due to small, uh, stock and, uh, quick rotations. And they're coming out of, uh, local seven eleven distribution centers. So very happy about that. Uh, the county does have fresh food, uh, items that have to be checked as part of the conditions of approval. And, um, we always sit at the top of the list there, um, from the standpoint of bananas at the checkout register to, uh, the pre-cut fruit and vegetables that are found in the, uh, the fresh food area. Um, this location is located about a mile between ARCO competitors. Um, I won't speak too much to that. That's not the point of today's, uh, meeting, but it, it has come up in the past, in particular with the CPAC meeting. Uh, we do v- view those Arcos as competition. There is a Safeway, uh, which includes fuel, that'd be a Safeway grocery, grocery store about a half mile away. Uh, don't consider that a competitor because again, of the, the nature of what we're trying to do. Quick in, quick out. And again, that can be by foot or by vehicle. Um, I, I do want to drill down just a little bit in that CPAC meeting because again, it's such an important established part of getting through Sacramento County entitlements. Uh, that meeting was held in June and of course, uh, uh, you know, it, it was slightly different in nature by the fact that it was just like this, uh, meeting being held online. A, a number of letters did come in. Uh, I have made reference, uh, to almost anybody that will listen. I, I, I don't know if the numbers are high or low. I, I have heard planning staff kind of, uh, talk about the inordinate amount of letters. Again, I, I, I think slightly relative in the world of COVID from the standpoint of, of hitting the enter button, uh, and, and maybe not attending in person to these meetings. I don't mean to belittle any of the, the criticism or, or comments that have come across the table. Uh, but I, I would want, uh, staff and, and the planning commission to realize that, uh, nothing's in a vacuum. And, uh, we certainly, uh, always have a silent majority when we open a store. From the standpoint that a lot of people don't show up at these meetings or, or weigh in to say, yeah, I, I am going to get gas there because they're going to be competitive or I'm going to get coffee there and et cetera, et cetera. But, um, I, I do want to say, and I, I think it's, it's pretty clear that about eighty percent of the comments there had to do with alcohol or a negative externality of which, uh, uh, they, they believed alcohol was the, the generator. Uh, again, it was mentioned that our competitors in this, uh, corridor, um, sell singles and things of that nature. So, uh, w- w- we do this a lot. We hear it a lot. And obviously it is something that, um, we want to be a problem solver with as well. And that has to do with vagrancy and homelessness and, uh, loitering and, and all the things that can come along uh, with, uh, single sales, uh, a lot of the pre kind of, uh, ABC laws that were around, uh, before the sheriff got involved in, in Sacramento County. Uh, we, going into that meeting, we had agreed, um, write down the letter of law to the, to the sheriff's conditions, which of course is limited sales, no singles and things of that nature. But again, the, the, the message was pretty overwhelming and it took a lot of, um, uh, thinking and, and I think courage on the side of seven eleven to say, you know, look, we, we want to be a good partner. We want to be here for a long time. Uh, we talked at great length about the proximity of the school and made the decision to pull the alcohol use. So I, I do want to reiterate that I think that, you know, th- this is so rare. We've got two downtown stores that are dry. Uh, that is mostly because of zoning and the fact of, uh, being in proximity to the, uh, uh, sports arena area. But, um, just seven, seven eleven's commitments to the community was overwhelming. And, um, I, I think it, it, it showed them to be a good neighbor and a good partner with that concession. Um, the, uh, just a little bit about the site plan from the idea of why this thing's laid out the way it is and, and what we're looking to accomplish. It's, it's really a mix of trying to meet again, the requirements that exist, uh, and kind of the layers of zoning. Part of your guys' tough, uh, job to do tonight is to try to make sense of, of general plan. And then you've got the LC and then you've got, uh, an overlay of the, the corridor. And then you've got a sub area of the corridor and things of that nature. So, you know, a lot of the layout designs really have to do with trying to check all those boxes. We've got a building that meets planning directives to be, uh, pedestrian activated, which is at the corner. Um, just a little, you know, fueling station, neighborhood market one-on-one, you, you. You, you typically want to have your building to the back, uh, with your fuel out in front. Um, pretty much because of SEPTED and your, your crime prevention through environmental design of having full eyes on that feeling, uh, between the road and the building. Um, this property is, is, uh, kind of odd shaped. It's a bit of a flagpole type thing going on. Um, so we really felt that, um, it was a win-win. We've got a building to the hard corner. The fuel is off along Fair Oaks. So you get drive-by visibility straight through the pump area, uh, a very safe situation. And then as we went along the process and including, uh, two DrAC meetings and getting feedback from them, uh, changing aesthetics of the building and whatnot, um, we did, uh, add a second set of doors to pedestrian activate the, the building even further. Um, you know, we, uh, when, when Meredith went through the opening summary, she did point out the two drives. Um, and, um, I just would also like to add that we've got two sidewalks that obviously are leading up to this new second set of doors. Um, that rarely happens, um, because again, um, the, the way that these buildings are laid out, they're, they're pretty much a three-sided box with things that go up against the wall. Uh, but in this case, again, 7-Eleven stepped up to the plate, rearranged quite a bit, a few, uh, things inside to make that work. And, um, I, I think it's a, it's a good result. You're, you're looking through the building. You've got, uh, access from the street. If somebody's walking home from, uh, pool or they're walking, uh, to work or bicycling, uh, something of that nature, they can, they can drop in and, and use that. Um, we've got the trash enclosure to the rear. Uh, so again, it's not visible, uh, as much to the street. Um, we saw the, uh, extensive landscaping, again, meeting all landscaping, uh, requirements that are part of, uh, the overlay area here. Um, we are putting up the masonry wall that's against the back property as the property and just a small area. But, um, nonetheless, uh, abuts a multifamily area. Um, we will have the bike parking. Uh, we will meet lighting, uh, and, uh, of course, uh, 7-Eleven is a industry leader and security. So security cameras internal and external, and we not only meet, but exceed sheriff's directives in that area. And always happy to share that information, uh, with both the sheriff and the neighborhood as, as, as items arise in the public right of way or on, on property. Um, I, I, I do want to talk a little bit about what I think is value added from the standpoint. Of course, you, we're coming, asking you for a use permit because obviously there's special interest involved from the standpoint that we'd like to run a business. Uh, but I think it's very important that we don't leave things kind of by the wayside because we take it as, as on face value, which is that, uh, from the standpoint that we have an existing building on site that, um, is sorely, uh, underutilized, uh, pretty much an eyesore. Uh, th- there are two businesses, uh, in- involved with the building. Uh, there's a small insurance agency. There is a glass auto repair, uh, uh, business there. Both of those leases are tied to the sale of the property. So I know from time to time, we get the question about evictions or things of that nature. Uh, this has all been worked out in ahead, uh, with the seller and his occupants. But again, uh, just a building that's not being used to its full potential, which includes a closed down restaurant, um, that has not had anyone in it for some time. Um, we're going to get the improvements of the public right of way to meet those county standards. Uh, upgrade of two driveways, which has been discussed, including, uh, um, colored driveways with, of course, a stamped block. Uh, we're going to get the removal of two unsafe driveways, which are nearest to the intersection because, uh, um, we don't need that, want that, and that's going to be better for traffic flow through the property. Um, the new landscaping where none exists currently. So again, not looking at it in a vacuum, but th- there's no landscape in there. And I think you, uh, uh, could tell that, uh, obviously you're going to get to a, a lot more. And, uh, the, really that corner is, is of importance because again, I think what you're getting is a business that's active. It's got people looking in and out of it. And, uh, and, uh, to pick up on again, those externalities of alcohol issues of the CPAC, uh, people are very much in the thinking of who is in the street, what's going on, who's walking up and down. And, um, I, I, I just think that a building that obviously has people in it that want a viable business for the foreseeable future, uh, are going to do a much better job of being a partner than a building that's underutilized, that is only occupied, uh, the eight hours of the day. Um, again, I'd like to now get to really wh- what we're spending the most amount of time on, which is the finding against the project by the staff, um, having to do with, in particular, the sub area that we find ourselves in, in the Fair Oaks Boulevard. Um, a- and, and again, I, I, I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV. So I, I, I will, um, hopefully Diane will get some time to weigh in on some, maybe the, the more particulars. But I, I think it's just really important to keep in mind and, and I think planning commission's done an excellent job of, of kind of fleshing these things out where basically we, we have to understand that there's, there's discretion involved here. Uh, w- we respectfully disagree with staff's finding against the project. Uh, and I think what we've heard is that they've used some discretion. And we'd like to lay out some points here that I think enable you to be able to use that same amount of discretion to find in favor of the project. Um, w- we did, uh, meet with a lot of the planning commission, uh, members before this meeting. And I, I'm a realist. I deal in the real world. And, um, I, I'll say some, uh, bold, hard truths. I think of both the, the plan and, and where we sit today. One of which is that the plan's whole point and purpose is to create a vibrant, uh, uh, area that is obviously moving into the future, uh, doing something different, meeting the requirements that obviously staff and, and the county have spent many, many years putting together, which I've touched on as far as the landscape and the right way and et cetera, et cetera. But I think from the standpoint that economic vibrancy is a key part. I, you know, it's, it's, it's in the first paragraph of the plan. I think we have to take a look at sometimes the bird in the hand versus the two in the bush. Um, the plan is, uh, interesting from the standpoint that, um, it is, uh, certainly a, a, a very complex document that, uh, attempts to create a sense of place over the next generation. Um, and I think there are some very good ideas in there, but I think at the same time, we have to be practical, especially in the world of COVID and, and take a look at, at some of the exhibits that are in there and some of the ideas as far as generating. The one question I was asked about, how do we generate the types of businesses that went and end up in here? Um, you know, I, I, I just again fear that there's a bit of a disconnect in today's, uh, economic climate based on, uh, this corner and, and what will happen here over the next five, 10, 15 years if, if we do not, uh, uh, have this project approved. Um, I, I want to get down to the brass tacks of exactly where we think the, the major gaps are in understanding between, uh, staff and, and ourselves. The first would be just kind of a general definition of where we find ourselves in the Fair Oaks Boulevard area. Um, while it does mention that, it says that we are in that, uh, east area. Um, the East Fair Oaks, uh, area. Um, there's kind of, um, um, a, a general sense or aura throughout the entire findings that, um, we find ourselves in the Main Street district or the core area, uh, that everything kind of, uh, uh, radiates out from that center, which of course is, um, very prohibitive. And I've not heard that word mentioned tonight, that anything is prohibited by what we're offering. But I think from the standpoint that there's a general, uh, ground swell or condition that, that suggests that we'd like to kind of, um, segue this kind of full pedestrian out of the Main Street and Core area, which again, I, I just think there's too many boxes that, that can be checked for the project that create a situation where, uh, we believe this project can, uh, peacefully coexist with the neighbors and build energy that I think gets to that point about, well, what next? What, what else is going to happen along here? Um, we're happy to take the lead as we're doing in Orangevale. Uh, we will be giving out about 30% of the pro- the property in order to, to meet those public right of way setbacks that are very, very, you know, challenging, um, uh, that, that bite into the bottom line. We're happy to do that, uh, from the standpoint of, uh, again, being, uh, a partner to the area and, and, and being the first to kind of kick it off. Um, the second is we do believe that the project's pedestrian friendly. Um, we, I called particularly called, uh, the 7-Eleven Real Estate Director that's, uh, in charge of this project this morning. Um, and, uh, we discussed a little bit about what our forecasted revenue would be out of this store. Uh, we're saying somewhere around 60% to 40%, so 60% convenience sales to 40% fueling sales. Um, I, I, I don't want to, um, you know, try to pull a fast one on anybody from the standpoint that we see synergy about pulling in for gas, going in for chips, going in for chips, remembering that they need to fuel up. Uh, it's just kind of the way the business works. But I, I think again, and, and to the, the description about where we're centered at that corner of that road, um, how we're going to be open to people, whether they walk, jog, run, bike. Uh, we're not discriminating as to how people come in and find us in order to, uh, get the items that they need and, uh, typically come to trust and, and believe in when, uh, it's set down in the neighborhood. Um, so I, I would say that we do think that we are pedestrian friendly and not, uh, uh, e- exactly only vehicular. Um, I don't think we live in an either or thing. So, uh, again, that's something I'd, I'd want you to apply your discretion to. We've talked a little bit about mixed use. That'd be the third and final point, um, that I'd like to make. The, the mixed use, again, we, we're typically thinking about three-story, two-residential over top, retail on the bottom. And, um, yeah, we just find that a hard sell for this corner. We find it a hard sell for this part of the corridor. Um, certainly understand the thinking behind that. Um, I think every time, and again, I, I presented this to a lot of different communities and, and heard just, just about every, you know, and again, people typically don't come to say thanks, you know, they, they come because they've got a concern. And, um, we find that, um, a lot of times that's tied with to, well, why can't we have this other use? And you know, you know, you guys have all done this long enough to say that, um, for the standpoint of a restaurant. Well, we would think a restaurant is a sit-down, uh, restaurant. And of course now we'd have out some outdoor seating because of Corona and the new world we live in. But, um, people got to find places to put those cars. I, I know the bus stop is down there. And, um, you know, w- one issue can always beget another issue. Uh, I've been involved with that several times. I know you all have as well as far as, um, you know, making a parking count or, uh, shared parking, things of that sort. So again, I, I, I think at the end of the day, we're, we're seeing here is a, a multi-use project that is providing, uh, uh, items that we feel are, are necessary in the community. We feel like we could come in and give a very good price, which provides value back to the community. And I think we get a, a corner that looks astoundingly better than it does now. Um, creates some real, uh, wind to the back from the standpoint of the four corners. And as you move down into that corridor, uh, again, most of those other vehicular, uh, intensive uses in that vehicular corridor, uh, remain under the old, uh, rules and situations. So I think from the standpoint of, of apples and oranges, we're just going to look so much better uh, and, and perform at a very, very high level for the neighborhood. Um, so that, those are kind of the three things that again, I, I really want to drive into as far as the specific plan. I certainly again, in closing from my point, do not want to come off as, uh, trying to throw the, the plan out with the bathwater because I know many years' time, uh, and really the blood sweat of the community going to put it together. Um, I think we're offering enough check boxes here to be a good partner, play by the rules and, uh, really value add to what is known as the Fair Oaks, uh, Boulevard. So with that, uh, I will, uh, I'll seat back.
Do you have any questions for the applicant? Was there one of you, any questions for the applicant from the commissioners?
No, I'm good.
No, not for me. Thank you. All right. Um, do you have any public comments?
Yes, we do have one caller on the line at this, this time. If you'll give me just a moment, I can, uh, pull them into the meeting. Caller you've entered the meeting. Please, uh, start making your public comment.
Hi, my name is Jan Fleming. At the CPAC meeting in May, 7-Eleven was asked if they would consider having a 7-Eleven 24-hour gas station and convenience store without the sale of alcohol. Um, they clearly responded no. They were only interested if 7-Eleven could sell apple, alcohol. And CPAC denied the application. Now 7-Eleven is requesting the 24-hour gas station and convenience store without the sale of alcohol. I feel that this is a ploy to get you to approve the 7-Eleven project. Once approved, 7-Eleven will most likely apply for an alcoholic beverage license. I urge you to deny this application. If the members of the planning commission do decide to grant this application, I am requesting that as a condition of approval, the parent company of 7-Eleven, any franchisee, potential franchisee applicant, or anyone affiliated with 7-Eleven cannot apply for a license to sell alcoholic beverages for a minimum of 50 years. Additionally, I am requesting that 7-Eleven provide a list along with contact information of five 7-Eleven stores in California nearest to Carmichael that currently do not sell alcoholic beverages and have not sold alcohol for a minimum of five years. If there are not similar, um, alcohol, if, if there are five similar, um, alcohol sales at 7-Eleven stores without sale, alcohol sales within 100 miles, then that supports the argument that this is, this is a ploy.
I can, everyone still hear the comments?
Do a loser. Nope. I can't hear.
I, I can't hear anymore.
Of responses to 7-Eleven's application, it is clear the residents of Carmichael do not want or need another convenience store with gasoline sales, which would most assuredly add a third problem area for the community. I respectfully request that you deny this application in its entirety. Thank you.
Commissioners, we do have another public, another caller and we're going to transfer, uh, get them transferred into the meeting. Just one moment. Caller you are live in the meeting. Please start your public comment.
Yeah. Was on the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Committee. And I, um, was also on the steering committee for the creation of the PBIT um, three years ago.
It looks like the call has been disconnected.
Is that our system or is it the caller's?
There's no way to know, but it, I, obviously it wasn't our system. I don't know if the caller, um, if there was a disconnect with bad connectivity or what. Um, we're going to call him back on our end. And, um, I'll also ask him to turn the meeting down in the background. If you could give us just a moment, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say we should probably give him maybe a minute to see if, uh, if any other comments and we can move on.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelby. One moment, please. And there was no answer, sir.
Okay, um. Commissioners, do you want to, um, know their public comment then at this time?
There are no, uh, other public comments at this time.
All right. Then we'll, we'll close the public comments. Um.
I believe Diane Kinderman is on the line.
Who is?
Uh, Diane Kinderman representing, uh, Guggenheim is on the, on the line, both using her phone and logged in on Blue Jeans. So if, um, she wanted to provide testimony.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we, we had, uh, moved on to the public comment. Um, and then we're again ready to have a discussion amongst the commissioners. So, so we have a question from the commissioner to the- So we have a question from the commissioner to the applicants.
Diane is part of the applicant team?
I don't have any more questions with the applicant.
Uh, I need to do I. This is Alan.
I don't either.
All right, then, um, we can, any comments from the commissioners?
Uh, I can start.
Sure.
Uh, as, as I mentioned, I did meet with, uh, virtually meet with the conference call with the applicants earlier this afternoon. Um, what I'm thinking here is I understand the the plan and the county and the, uh, the neighborhood's vision for, uh, community oriented, uh, pedestrian oriented, uh, and transportation oriented, uh, thoughtful, uh, development along the corridor. And something that, because it's a somewhat of a prominent, uh, intersection and it'd be great to have something that's destination based, that would be, provide amenities to the, to the neighborhood. And I'm not talking to amenities to, uh, to supplement the existing retail, but just to basically amenities for the residential neighbors. Somebody, somewhere that they could walk to the project. I would say I'm not necessarily opposed to the, uh, to the development of the project itself. Um, and or am I necessarily opposed to the fuel island? But I do not, at this point, I do not think the design is really conducive to a pedestrian friendly development. Um, and what the solution is, I, I'm not, not really sure right now, but to, in my mind, this project needs to bring some sort of amenity to the community. Granted, it brings, um, you know, a retail facility, something they can grab, something in and out quickly. But that's what my concern is. I, I wouldn't want this project to be drive in, grab something quickly and exit. That just encourages get in and out in the car quickly. And to be something for amenity for the neighborhood, I would want something that promote, uh, walking traffic, promote people to get out of their cars to and use this facility. So again, um, I'm not necessarily opposed to the project, but I don't think it's quite there yet in terms of really promoting the pedestrian, um, component of this. And then as for the mixed use, um, I'm in agreement. I can't see high density retail or high density residential on this corner. I think, uh, it's, I mean, if you look at our surroundings and stuff like that, I just don't think it's a compatible fit for mixed use with the high density residential attached to it. But I do believe that, uh, this project has some lost opportunities to really start getting more and promoting a higher pedestrian use. That's it. That's my, that's my comments.
This is Cara. I guess I'll go next. Cause, oh, sorry. Were you gonna? Something?
Uh, um, if you want to go next, you can go next, Cara. I'll, I'll go after you. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I guess I agree with, um, some of your comments, Commissioner Hahn, um, but I guess I do, I think I have a, um, um, my, my problem with this is that I just, I don't think because of the plans that are in place, we can make the finding that they're consistent. And we do have discretion as the applicant mentioned, but to me, that discretion is really to guide the development, um, approval process in line with the plans that our county and the community ha, have developed. And it's unfortunate that the speaker, I think, was cut off because it sounded like he was involved in, in some of those processes. And it, the, the challenge is really, um, to make those hard decisions. When you look at the corridor and some of the retail there, a lot of it is, um, you know, there's some fast food. There's a lot of restaurants, um, but to, to start to transition to more of a pedestrian friendly environment, which is what the, the plan is really sort of outlining, we have to, we have to start making those decisions. And, and that is really the difficulty because it is a, a corner where there isn't really an active use right now. And this would definitely, um, be, um, a, a new use instead of a kind of an empty space. But the, the challenge is that we have to, I think we're charged with the decision or the discretion to kind of guide that process. And I do think it's a bit of a lost opportunity. Um, I agree that, you know, mixed use residential right there might not be appropriate right now, but depending on the development of the corridor and other uses and kind of in line with the plan, eventually it, it might get there. And just to, you know, I mean, this is sort of a, a side, but you know, the governor just announced a transition of gasoline vehicles by 2035. Now that, there's a whole lot of, um, you know, ambiguity around that. But we're really as a state, I think, trying to move to a zero carbon economy. We're trying to, um, incentivize people to get out of their cars and walk and make a pedestrian friendly environment. And that's the effort we've put into these plans, I think, is, is demonstrated. And so it's, I think incumbent upon us to try and move those forward. And while it's not an easy decision, I, I'm inclined to support, um, staff's recommendation tonight to, um, to deny the, the use permit.
And I have a, um, a literary comments. I, I have a, it's a slightly different view of it. I, I think when, when Commissioner Hahn was asking this question in the beginning and kind of asking, is almost, uh, a grocery store somewhat by your right in the LC zone? Um, and, and somewhat it, it, you can make an argument that it is. And so I look at it and, and I think it's really about the canopies because if I looked at it as just, uh, we're gonna pay a convenience store in there. Then, then I, I think then it'd be fair to talk about, you probably have alcohol sales if you're gonna have a convenience store. Um, I think that's clearly what the community does not want in, in that, in that area, anything done with alcohol. Um, so I, I do view the, the, uh, you know, them agreeing not to have alcohol sales as being a significant concession. Uh, I don't think it's not a, in my mind, it's not a Trojan door because they, they'd have to go to, through the, through the, uh, board to advisors to, to add anything in the future. And I'm pretty sure that would get, uh, no support. Um, um, and so a lot of it comes to, um, I, I think it's an improvement from what's on the site today. Um, I definitely understand the comments about moving away from, um, uh, you know, uh, motor vehicles in 2035, but even then there's still going to be a need for gas. We still have gas powered vehicles, um, ev- even after that, 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 that time horizon. Um, so based on, on that, I, I'm actually, I'm, I'm okay with the project. Um, I, I do think that the biggest hurdle was the alcohol sales. And I, I do think they're eliminating that. Um, and I, and I don't know it's fair that the applicant to say, hey, you gotta wait 30, you know, how many years for the, the whole site to develop before you can go put something in there? Um, that's kind of what my thoughts are. Commissioner Tati, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you. Um, and I appreciate the, the conversation around this. You know, I, I've spent the better part of basically my entire life living in Carmichael around that area. Um, and so, you know, I've been very involved with a lot of these different community engagement plans, uh, whether it's Carmichael Community Act Plan, the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan, or, uh, even talking through, um, I think it was Gary Hirsch, uh, who was talking about the, the PBIT process. You know, I, I know there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of passion within the community regarding, uh, this area, this corridor. Um, and you know, I, I would be inclined to support what staff is recommending at this time because I don't think it's consistent with those plans. And the community has spent a lot of time, um, engaging, uh, the neighbors. Um, you know, we talk about silent majorities. They've talked to the, the residents, the, the people who live uh, all around in, in Carmichael, around what they envision for a, if you will, a better future of the, of the corridor and, uh, the business environment and everything that's going on there in Carmichael. And so at this point, I don't think that this, uh, plan is consistent with those plans and with, uh, what everything the community has been pushing for. So, um, you know, if there are no other comments, I would make the motion to, um, to support the staff recommendations and, uh, denial of, of the project.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can you take a vote?
Commissioner Polly? Commissioner Shelby?
No.
Commissioner Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom?
Uh, before I, uh, cast my vote, I do want to say that, uh, I do support the development of this project. I just don't think it's the right solution yet. So I'm going to say I support staff recommendations. So yes, to, to the vote.
That is a yes. Okay, thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Tati?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes to adopt staff recommendations.
Yeah. Uh, can we call the next item on the agenda?
And the next item is the planning director's report.
The commissioners, this is Chris Boholi again. Um, I don't have much to report. I, I think the only thing to mention is that, uh, Commissioner Polly is, is obviously is not here this evening. Um, she has indicated, um, to, uh, staff and the clerk of the board that tonight was going to be her last meeting. Um, and so, um, we will be working to, um, uh, determine what the replacement is. But in the meantime, uh, just so the, um, planning commission is aware, um, until that replacement is made, we will likely have a four-member body for a while. So it'll be important that we continue to work with you on, um, attendance at meetings and, and figuring out, um, sort of game planning, if you will, for future, future meetings so that we can, uh, continue to conduct business in a, in a timely manner. So that's the only thing that I wanted to, to mention during the report.
Okay. Um, that's news to me. Um.
Mr. Chair.
Do we need to have a vice chair? Is that, is that, we need to do next, I guess, next meeting?
Um, I, I will leave that to the clerk of the board, but yes, I would assume that we do need to, um, uh, that we do need to, uh, uh, figure out a, a vice chair.
This is Alma with the clerk of the board's office. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, um, yes, we can schedule, um, we can schedule a, um, schedule that at the next, um, meeting, which is October 19th, or the next meeting if it, if that doesn't happen.
Okay, well, we do the next meeting and then, so we're meeting the 19th and the 28th, right? We added a meeting too, right, in October? Are we doing?
We, we added the 19th.
So.
So there's only two meetings in October, is the 19th and the 26th?
Okay. Okay, so October 19th and 26th, right?
Correct.
Okay, got it. On my calendar.
All right. Any, uh, any others? Anything else? Other news?
I, I On my end.
I hope Commissioner Polly's health is okay, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, that's it. That's all important. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, next item on the agenda?
And the next item, number six is miscellaneous scheduling matters.
I think we just covered that. And we, we already have meetings next to two cycles, right? So it's we have, we have by
We, we, we definitely have items, so we, we, uh, will definitely have meetings on the 19th and 26th.
Okay.
And then I would assume, um, just given the way that staff is, um, kind of planning for the remainder of the meetings throughout the end of the year, um, looks like we'll be having all of the meetings through the end of the year. Uh, we have a number of items that we're looking to schedule, so.
All right. And then last is, uh, any public comment?
And the last is public comment, and we do not have any, uh, anyone else on the line.
All right, if that's the case, we'll call it adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
They're raising your mouth.